Hello, everyone. Welcome. I would like to call to order the Cumberland School Committee meeting today, October 12th, 2017, at 7:21 PM, and ask that you please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. It sounded like we had an echo on this side. It was like in the Grand Canyon. Again, welcome, everyone. Next item on the agenda, approval of the agenda. Pleasure of the committee?
Motion to approve.
Mr. Fiorello makes a motion to approve. Do I have a second? Second by Mr. Hess and Mrs. Goggan. All in favor? Against? Eyes have it, 6-0. I would like to state for the record that Mr. Demonic is absent from tonight's meeting. Thank you. Next item on the agenda is the consent agenda. Approval of minutes regular meeting, 9/28/2017. The approval of minutes from executive session, 9/28/2017. The enrollment report from 10/1/2017. School police report, 9/1/2017. In the residency truancy report from 10/1/2017. Pleasure of the committee?
Motion to approve the consent agenda.
Mr. Fiorello has a motion on the floor to approve the consent agenda. Do I have a second? Second by Mrs. Goggan. All in favor? Against? Eyes have it, 6-0. Next item on the agenda is the report out of executive session meeting. Report out of executive session meeting on 10/12/2017, which was this evening. Report out of executive session votes. There were no votes, but there was a vote to seal the minutes of the executive session. Pleasure of the committee? Mr. Dennett makes a motion to seal the meetings of the executive session. Do I have a second by Mr. Fiorello? All in favor? Eyes have it, 6-0. Thank you. Next item on the agenda is the superintendent's report. Mr. Mitchell.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. If I may, I'd like to take these three items that are on the agenda a little out of order.
Absolutely.
Well, the first two things, I'll take them together. I just wanted to give everyone an update on the National Blue Ribbon Award that was awarded to Community Elementary School. I think I mentioned in the last meeting that Community School was one of 342 schools in the country to earn this distinction. And when you're a Blue Ribbon school, you have distinguished the school as one of the best in the country. So 342 out of 100,000 is pretty impressive. So we have tentatively scheduled Friday, November 7th, as the day that we're going to celebrate this award. We're going to certainly invite a number of folks to attend. In addition to the school committee, we'll send invitations to the commissioner. We'll invite the governor. Whether or not they're going to be available to come is another story. But we're looking at celebrating at Community School. We're thinking that we'll do something in the gymnasium because they'll be able to accommodate a number of people. And as we get this a little more formalized, that will keep you all informed when we have a more specific time and, you know, any of the festivities that will be planned. So just wanted to mention that. Again, that's on November 7th. And the other thing, I just wanted to give a quick facilities update. As you know, we have weekly meetings with the project manager. Many times, the Torado architectural firm is also in attendance. Louis Torado himself attends our meetings. And occasionally, we'll do a phone conference when everyone is not available. We had a phone conference on Wednesday to get an update. And we're in good shape. I think just about all of the work is done. The things that were still a little unfinished were the fire alarm system at Garvin. That is 99% complete. So the expectation is that will be done within the next week or so. The only other thing that is a little concern is the boilers at Community. We have been assured that there will be heat when we need heat. And I guess they're still waiting for... Alex, what is it that they're still waiting for at...
We're waiting for the energy-efficient pump. Hasn't come in yet. It's on delay, you know, back order. But the vendor at E&amp;E have split the cost of installing another pump that will run the boilers until the other pump comes in, and then they'll switch it out. So my understanding is tomorrow, they will fill the boiler with water and we'll, you know, we'll be generating... We'll be able to generate heat next week. They'll then come in and do the... The only thing that isn't done there is the glycol system. The other elementary schools are moving along on that. But, you know, you still have heat without that. We just want to put the glycol in to prevent freeze-ups. And I don't think we're in any danger in the next several weeks of having a freeze that's going to, you know, give us problems with UN events or whatever. So...
We are in New England. We are in New England.
That's true.
The only other thing that I would add regarding facilities is that we are having conversations about the next step in the process. So we are already having conversations about the work that we would like to do next summer. So those conversations are taking place as well. And there's been some revision based on the change in priorities, based on some of the things that we experience over the course of the school year. So we're thinking ahead to next summer.
Mr. Mitchell, do we have the next date that the building committee is meeting?
You know what? That's a good question. I think that is something that we'll schedule a meeting either the end of this month or the beginning of next month so that we can give an update as to where we are in the process.
Excellent. Thank you.
Thank you. And last but not least, we have some special guests here this evening. As you all know, Mrs. Malcolm, the principal of Cumberland Hill Elementary School, also referred to affectionately as the shelf elf on the shelf. She's here with members of her staff and some of her students, and they're going to provide you with some information about the STEM Fest work that they are doing. So with that, I'll turn it over to Mrs. Malcolm.
Mrs. Malcolm, I'd like to hear the elf principal on a shelf.
I think it'll be self-explanatory, I believe. Will it be self-explanatory?
It will be self-explanatory. It will. I am on my tippy toes. Oh, there it is.
There you go. That is...
Yes. On occasion.
Mr. Chandler, can we throw that on the screen real quick? So the public... Oh, it's in there? Oh, okay. All right. Thank you. That is funny.
I actually have been so fortunate to basically inherited a staff at Cumberland Hill who is so motivated and driven. And a lot of this work and the presentation that you came... We wanted to do a science fair, but then it came to be through our science subcommittee of let's do a STEAM festival, where students were coming in and sharing their information and sharing the projects and sharing their ideas and their learning with their families, their parents, their grandparents. So this was kind of the brainstorming of Mrs. Durkin, Mrs. Schaefer, Mrs. Alger. So it was a team. It was our science committee. Mrs. Cobb, who could not be here tonight. So I am actually going to turn it over to them. They said, "What do you think?" I said, "Go for it." And they took it and ran with it. So the credit is all of the staff. I facilitated and supported their decisions and the vision they had. And this was the first of hopefully many moving forward. So I'm going to actually turn it over to Mrs. Durkin.
I'm the second elf on the shelf. No, wait.
Hello, Mrs. Durkin.
Hello. First of all, thanks for having us here tonight, and thank you for all that you do for us. I'd like to start off with how this all started. We... Summer of 2016... Next slide, please. I was actually invited to a thing, an event called the Mickelson Exxon Teacher Academy. It's basically was established by Phil Mickelson, the golfer. He's a great guy. I met him and his wife. And they connected with ExxonMobil. And they had 150 teachers from the United States were invited to this event. It was a whole week of STEM, science, technology, engineering, and math. I spent a week in Jersey City, New Jersey. And they said, "When you go back, will you bring it to your school?" And I said, "Absolutely." So September came, and then October, and then Thanksgiving. And I went, "All right, I better go to Mrs. Malcolm." So December came. And Mrs. Malcolm was sitting at a bookshelf, reading a book with her elf uniform on. That's... You give away my kind of picture. Anyway, I went up to Mrs. Malcolm. And I says, "Mrs. Malcolm, I'd love to bring the STEM Fest to our school." You know? And she says, "Absolutely. You know, do what you got to do." So one, two, an amazing staff. And some of them are sitting here today. And I said, "Would love you... You know, what can we do to get this going?" So obviously, we brainstormed. And we had a teacher from every grade level. And we went from STEM Fest and decided to add an A into it, which was the arts. So that also included our art teacher and our music teacher, who obviously couldn't be here tonight. So it went from STEAM to STEM. And we decided that we didn't, again, want the regular, you know, the regular science fair. We thought it would be better that these kids kind of take control and leadership. And they were the ones, and a couple of them are sitting right here, and you're going to meet them in a second, that kind of became teachers and really showed what they know, you know, what they got to know in science, technology, and engineering, math through the school year. So we've... Obviously, right here, all the teachers are not going to read their names, but one from every grade level. And let... Next slide, please. And we decided that we needed to connect it to the community. So we invited teachers from the middle school to be a part of this and the high school. We also invited people from the community, OCYL, a litany of exhibitors. So not only did the students present, but we also had exhibitors that the young, the families could kind of get involved with as well or kind of experience. And one of our great supporters, and he's here, Mr. Panagelopakis. He owns a company called Patriot Computers. And he had actually his three daughters presenting. And one is here, my friend Adriana. Do you want to stand up? Adriana, would you like to just quickly tell them what you did?
I did a program called Scratch. I was making a scratch on Cumberland Hill Elementary School.
So she was actually sitting... Can I help you on this? Okay. So she was actually sitting at the computer. And we had it up on a big screen. What she was doing was being projected up. So all the kids were coming in, all the parents were coming in, and they were observing how I'm acting. We're going to scroll through just some of the pictures here. So we had our school nurse, and her husband owns a physical therapist, so come in and showed them, you know, a lot of things about physical therapy. If you want to skip to the next one. With Franklin Farms, one of our favorite, 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 come in. Mrs. Lambert, who is one of our kindergarten teachers at Community. Audubon, 15-minute field trip, which is from Providence. And they come in. Audubon, they absolutely love. They absolutely get into that. Then we had Rhode Island Recycling. And we had a networking Rhode Island, which is a lady I connected with when... An event down in Brown University. We loved the connection with OCYL because they were doing their own STEAM Fest in the summer. So they kind of like introduced theirs. And then we went and helped them. They came and helped us. So it was great. I loved that connection as well. Skyscrapers, the kids absolutely love it. They got to look through some telescopes. So that was fun. And we... Oh, the drone club from the high school was an absolute hit. So we had high schoolers. In fact, some of the high schoolers were students that come into our building during the week to help. And they actually said, "Hey, can we fly drones?" I said, "Absolutely." So we had actually Mr. Palmer come down. And he was the leader of that. So we thank him for that. And then I'm going to show you... Just look at some of the pictures here. We've got some of the families that participated. We had actually our kindergartners. They had their STEM bins, STEAM bins, excuse me. And they were kind of building and showing and teaching their parents and siblings. And we had some in fourth grade. We're building circuits in fourth grade, and Mrs. Cobb's helping there. But a lot of the students were kind of experiencing... They were showing other students. So that was really, really important. Some were happy families, and more happy families. Everybody is really happy that night. Oh, you haven't stopped there. Then we have my friend Bray. Bray, would you like to come up? So Bray is one of our fifth... Excuse me. He was a fifth grader. He's in middle school right now. And he came tonight especially just to tell you what he did. Come on up.
In the third grade, I taught Kahoot to grownups and many kids. It was kind of hard because there was in fifth graders and fourth graders and first graders. So we had to decide what level Kahoot we had to do. But it was really fun teaching people how to do Kahoot.
That's a star. You see him over there in that picture, the wee guy with the gray shirt? He is amazing. The beginning of the year, it was tough, right? Yeah. And by the end of the year, he was a brilliant teacher. Great job. And then we came... We could have shown you lots of pictures here. We have Mrs. Malcolm acting like a principal right now, which is really cool. At the end of the night, we had actually origami, okay? There were so many different activities. And I know you guys were extremely busy at the end of the year. So next year, we're having it in March. It's the week before St. Patrick's Day because they want to have it in the 17th. So anyway, you could back it up a week. So we're actually scheduled for March 10th. And our timing, we're not 100% sure. The parents want to really be involved. They said, "Actually, that night, we only had it for an hour and a half." And they said, "Is there any way you could extend it?" Because... And they said, "Is there any way you could do it on the weekend?" And I said, "Sure." So next year, hopefully, it's going to be bigger and better. And so we're just excited to have this event. It's actually the first time something like this ever has been in the school district. So the fact that it was started in our school makes us like... You know, we're just delighted about that. Also, I'd like to acknowledge again, a wonderful staff. I mean, all these people, all these teachers back here. Some of them are not here tonight. Amazing team. Amazing team of people. It wouldn't have happened without them. So thank you for your time. Oh, Joelle. Did I get Joelle in? Sorry, Joelle. Very important. Seventh grader. Seventh grader who's been back two years. Joelle, would you like to tell them? I'm sorry. One more.
Come on up, Joelle.
At the STEAM Fest, a lot of kids and their parents walked in the room. And I taught them Scratch and how to program different coding things. And it was really fun to see all the parents experience like different coding programs and see how their kids could learn and be more creative and create like games and stuff. And it was really fun and exciting to be part of this team.
Thank you, everybody. I really appreciate your time.
Thank you.
So I just want to follow up and say, now you can understand why we enjoy walking into Cumberland Hill Elementary School every day. It is... There's such positive learning, professionalism, collaboration between not only staff members, but students and staff members as well. So it's a really exciting place to be. So thank you for your time tonight. We appreciate it.
Mrs. Malcolm, you have a true passion in that school. I do have to say that I... I mean, you know, I attended that school the first day of school. I think I went to four schools. And the... Mrs. Malcolm was outside, directing traffic. And the police officer was on the curb talking to everyone. It was... Usually, it's the principal on the curb talking to everyone. And the police officer, who was opposite. Mrs. Malcolm is very involved and very well-liked. Parents were rolling down their windows, yelling "Hi." Kids are running up to you. It was great. So excellent job in that school as all of our principals in all the schools. But thank you very much. All right. Any questions in the committee? Next item... Well, you know what? Let's take a two-minute break. This way. All right. Thank you. Now you got to do homework. We'll make it a five-minute break. All right. Thank you. Welcome back. Mr. Mitchell.
Yeah, I just need to clarify one thing. When I was giving the date for the celebration for the Blue Ribbon School Celebration at Community, I said Friday, November 7th. It's actually Friday, November 10th. Thank you, Mrs. Vogel, for pointing out to me that November 7th is a Tuesday. So it is that Friday, the 10th.
Excellent. Thank you, Mr. Mitchell. Next item on the agenda, Chairperson's report. Mr. Pregnano, do you have anything to add for the fiscal year 2018 budget update? Excellent. Thank you. Next item on the agenda, reports of standing committees. I'm sorry, Mr. Fiorello? Report of standing committees, payment of bills. Mr. Fiorello.
Yes, Mr. Demonica could not be here. He asked me to do this. We approved... We had a very short meeting in fiscal, and the majority of it was payment of bills. So I would make a motion to approve payment of bills in the amount of $1,314,628.69.
Mr. Fiorello has a motion on the floor for the payment of bills in the amount of $1,314,628.69. Do I have a second? Second by Mr. Hess. All in favor? Against? Eyes have it, 6-0. Next item on the agenda is the Fiscal Management Subcommittee Update. Mr. Fiorello.
Well, like I said, the majority of the meeting was taken up by payment of bills. Mr. Pregnano had handed out the monthly report, which we really just kind of skimmed through. We were going to look at it in our off time and then come back at the next meeting with any questions. I believe that was all we discussed. Oh, yeah, we did discuss the theoretical increase in aid that the state will be giving us, approximately 1.2. Yeah. So hopefully, good stuff.
Thank you, Mr. Fiorello. Don't go anywhere. Next item on the agenda is the Policy and Procedure Subcommittee Update. Mr. Fiorello.
We had a very short meeting in policy tonight, just to go over a couple of points in the new I-9 internet filtering policy. I just had a question that was answered. There are no changes to that policy. No action was taken. And that'll be on the agenda later for the first reading.
Thank you, Mr. Fiorello. Next item on the agenda is the Achievement and Communications Subcommittee Update. Mr. Dennett.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The Achievement and Communications Subcommittee met on Tuesday night. And we had one item on the agenda, which was an overview of the Guidance Department at the high school. We had, I think, all... Most of the guidance counselors were there. I think one could not show up. But it was a good discussion. I think the idea was for us to learn the different activities that the guidance performs. And I... Personally, I was surprised by the breadth of activities that they do every day. And we just had a good discussion about what they do. And it's leading to ways to improve service in that department.
Excellent. Thank you, Mr. Dennett. And I do have to agree. I attended that meeting also. And it was good to have discussions between the two boards.
Yeah, I want to add, I appreciate everyone came to the meeting. I appreciate other committee members who didn't have to be there came to the meeting too, because it was an important meeting.
Thank you, Bray, Mr. Dennett. Next item on the agenda is the comments from the public. Anyone? Mrs. Malcolm. Oh, okay. Just checking. Thank you. Next item on the agenda, public hearing, reading of new policy, first reading. Mr. Fiorello.
As I stated, this is the first reading of the I-9 internet filtering policy, which we covered in some detail two weeks ago. This policy is just intended to make us in compliance with state law and RIDE regulations, as well as federal law, actually. Our policy essentially taken from the template that RIDE provided. And the big takeaway would be the Technology Committee that's going to be formed by Mr. Chandler and Mr. Mitchell. I would just ask that the policy be read into the record. And then in two weeks, we will actually vote on it.
Thank you, Mr. Fiorello.
I also believe that... I'm sorry. This... I believe we will be the first district in Rhode Island to actually pass and approve their internet filtering policy.
Excellent. Thank you, Mr. Fiorello. Any public comment in regards to the I-9 internet filtering policy? All right, hearing done. Committee, comment? Next item on the agenda is old business. Discussion in our vote to approve 2017, 2018 school bus routes. My recommendation is to table this. All right, current... Mr. Fiorello makes a motion to table. Do I have a second? Second by Mrs. Goggan. Mrs. Friedman, I apologize. I would like to say before the vote that we are in touch with Durham. They're working on a couple of different routes that are just kind of tweaking out a little bit, finishing up. I do think that the next school committee meeting will be able to pass this through. It's a little late, but... Mr. Mitchell? Yes, Mrs. Goggan?
Sorry, I just... So we finally got the reports of when they're arriving at school. And it appears we have three buses to... Two to Ashton, one to Cumberland Hill that still arrive right around 9 o'clock. And so I'm assuming that's when they're getting to the grounds, not when actually kids are in their seats. So we do still have three busloads of kids arriving late to school. So I don't know what the plan is to do.
We will have... Mr. Mitchell will reach out to Durham in relation to that. And then Durham will be here in two weeks. And hopefully, we'll have resolution on everything. I know there's always some glitches throughout the year, but we do need to get this structured in a timely fashion that everybody's arriving in the school. So thank you, Mrs. Goggan. All in favor? Against? Eyes have it, 6-0. Next item on the agenda is new business. Overview of Professional Development Day on October 6th, 2017. Mr. Mitchell.
Just quickly, before I turn it over to Mr. Demonic, he's going to do a quick overview of what we did last Friday. But I just... Just a couple of things that I think are important to say about professional development. You know, we... You know, we work really hard at providing professional development opportunities that are practical and things that teachers can actually use in their practice. But, you know, I think it's important to remember that we're not just talking about teachers because we also have psychologists, social workers, librarians, number of different... Number of folks that we need to provide meaningful professional development for them. And I just want to commend Mr. Demonic because by all accounts, last Friday's Professional Development Day was very successful. I have received a number of emails from staff, you know, really having a lot of positive things to say about the professional development that was provided. So it is a credit to the work, which is significant amount of work that has to go into planning an event that's going to be meaningful for everyone. So I just felt it was important to state that before Tony just gives you a quick overview. Tony?
Thank you, Mr. Mitchell. I appreciate the compliment. But I do want to mention that it's a coordinated effort. There are a lot of people that put their hands on this. Dr. Santa, the coordinators, the ITCs, um, you know, my coordinators. So there are a number of people that chip into the professional development schedule, uh, to make it as comprehensive as it is. So I wanna make sure that they're recognized. There are also a number of teachers who volunteered and I'll get into a, a second facilitating some things. In addition, Mrs. Malcolm was one of the facilitators in, in one of our sessions. Um, and, and I'll, again, I'll, I'll get into it in a moment. Um, so last Friday was the first of four sessions this year that we have on our, on our schedule for professional development. Um, I did provide a copy to Cindy Shabbat, uh, for her to post on the drive. So you should have a copy of the differentiated professional development. You'll see that every session is typically in an AM and PM session, um, which provides us flexibility for movement to provide more, more opportunities for teachers. As with every PD, uh, you know, our goal is to improve on our approach to PD. And, and what that means is we don't wanna just provide blanket PDs to all of the different content areas in our district. We wanna make sure that it's differentiated for all those different groups that Mr. Mitchell mentioned. Uh, we also wanna make sure that it's relevant and meaningful across all the content areas, which is also a, a big challenge to coordinate that. Uh, but a- among the highlights of the day, I think the biggest highlight of this was an idea that came from, uh, really Kathy Cardoza and, and some of the ITCs in the district around having an unconference. For those of you that don't know what an unconference, tech conference, it's, it's basically a pod of workshops that happen, um, that are connected to a specific topic. Um, so for this one, it was technology and blended learning. And there are different various topics. And depending on what teachers wanted to choose to attend, they have the autonomy to choose and go to whichever session they want to. And we had a volunteer list set up and many, many teachers and administrators signed up to facilitate, share their expertise. And those, those teachers chose which sessions they wanted to go to depending on their interest level, um, what they wanted to learn about, um, al- also what they wanted to build their expertise on so that they could bring those tools to the classroom. So that's probably a lot of the feedback that Mr. Mitchell was getting, uh, positive feedback on. Those teachers really, uh, enjoyed being a part of that. So, Mrs. Malcolm, do you have anything that you wanna share about that or add to, to that?
Every piece of feedback that I received from my staff, as well as the teaching assistants, was extremely positive. And I found the unconference beneficial. I went to, um, the unconference on students leading their parent-teacher conferences. So it was student-led and when it's very eye-opening. It was led by a staff member at BF Norton. Um, so it was very beneficial for my learning and my professional practice as well. But it was very well-received, very well-organized and all the feedback was extremely positive. So I think we're, we're on the right track. It was wonderful.
The, lastly, the high school also, uh, basically set up a pod type of professional development. And one of their guiding questions for their professional development was around, how do we measure one year's growth, uh, for our secondary students? And that was really the focus of it. And teachers were, uh, moving around to the different workshops around that, that guided question. And that's, that's pretty much the summary. Oh, yeah, so you wanna mention that?
And, and I, I think another thing that's really important to mention is that we didn't pay professionals to come in and do the, do the professional development for us. We are using teacher leaders and the expertise of our staff to share their knowledge and expertise with their colleagues. And we have spent a lot of time studying, um, professional practice and, and those practices that we know improve student performance. And one of the most beneficial things that we can do as educators is share our knowledge with one another. Collaboration, meaningful collaboration between professionals, sharing their knowledge with one another on a regular basis has the most profound impact on student performance. So the beauty of this, uh, experience was and will be as we continue over the next three professional development days that we have planned over the course of the school year, is that we have essentially teachers teaching teachers. And, um, a lot of the work was connected to the blended learning training that, um, several of our teachers had last year. So they are sharing their expertise. And, and as we saw, uh, this evening with the students from Cumberland Hill, one of the things that always, um, stayed with me, uh, through my experience as not only a teacher, and I still consider myself a teacher, but also as an administrator, you remember 80% or more of what you teach others. So by having students teach their, their classmates and having teachers teach teachers, that's when the learning really sticks. So we're, we're, you know, this differentiation that, that Tony talked about is, um, impressive and definitely the, the direction that we wanna go in. And again, the feedback has been impressively positive. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Excellent. Well, uh, very well spoken by Mr. Demonic and Mr. Mitchell. Thank you very much. Great update. Next item on the agenda, Discussion and a Vote to Approve Home Instruction, Homeschool Instruction Request for the 2017, 2018 School Year.
Chair, we are recommending approval for the current homeschooling requests that are before you this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Demonic. Mr. Denon makes a motion to approve. Do I have a second? Second by Mrs. Goggan and Mr. Hess, all in favor? Eyes have it, six zero. Thank you. Next item on the agenda, Discussion and a Vote to Approve the First Reading of New Policy I-9 Internet Filtering Policy. Mr. Fiorillo?
We don't actually need to vote on the reading. It's always that rate.
We run into this every time.
Yeah, so.
Mr. Chairman, one of the things that, I, I had a conversation with Mrs. Shabbat about this today and I think she needs a little guidance on, we just wanna make sure that we agenda this properly. So she, you know, she's just gonna need a little guidance on how it should be worded. I understand the confusion.
Yeah, no, no problem. Thank you, Mr. Mitchell. So no action. Next item on the agenda is Personnel Recommendations. Mrs. Fogel, welcome.
Good evening. I only have one for you tonight. Sire, request the advice and consent on the resignation of Leanne Cooper, Reading Specialist at North Cumberland Middle School, effective October 13th, 2017.
Thank you. Pleasure of the committee. Mr. Denon makes a motion to approve the one resignation. Correct, resignation, yeah. Do I have a second? Second by Mrs. Goggan. All in favor? Against? Eyes have it, six zero. Thank you, Mrs. Fogel. Next item on the agenda, wow, we're whipping through this, this, uh, agenda here. Next item on the agenda is the School Committee Comment School Liaison Reports. Anyone? Mr. Fiorillo?
Last week, I had the, uh, pleasure of meeting with the Cumberland Special Education Advisory Committee at the library. It was the first meeting of the school year. Uh, we had some new members show up. It was a good meeting. We also had a representative from Ripeen, which is the Rhode Island Parent Information Network. And she had a great discussion regarding, uh, special education in the schools. She also gave us a great packet of information to hand out to different parents. And I would urge any special education parents, uh, to get involved. They will be able to have some positive impact on, uh, policies and procedures of, um, issues regarding special education students, as well as some 504 issues, uh, throughout the school district.
Thank you, Mr. Fiorillo. Excuse me. I, um, on Tuesday, I attended the Charter Review Commission Board at the Town Council Chambers. And I saw our liaison, Mr. Rick Bolio, in action, uh, very vocal and, uh, adding very good content. I, they told me that I was the only person in the audience to, to attend this meeting since they, they put it together. So I stayed an hour and 20 minutes and then it was time to go home and eat dinner. But it's, they, we, I do have the minutes available from, from those meetings that I can pass on. Uh, what they're doing is they're going through every single, uh, item in ordinance in the charter. They're asking any member to add content or change. They're setting a priority. Then they're gonna have another, within their meetings, from what I understand, they look at the priority and then at the end, they're gonna have a vote whether it should go in front of the council for a change to the, uh, constituents. So, Mr. Fiorillo?
Possible to have Mr. Bolio come and give us an update on?
Yes.
Seeing as he's our representative?
Absolutely. Make a note of that. And then also, we do have the RIASK Chairperson Dinner that Mr. Denon and I will be attending this week. Mr. Fiorillo will be there as well, but as a, as a mem- as a, uh, board member, executive member. Looking forward to that. That same night is also the Community School PTO. And then on the 17th is the North Cumberland Middle School, uh, PTO in their library. So, um, Mrs. Malcolm, I'm not sure, did you already have a PTO meeting that I missed? Okay.
It's in November 12th.
Excellent. And the Garvin PTO is Monday, on the 16th. So that's all I have to report as of right now. Any other school committee member? Alright, excellent. Next item on the agenda, Mr. Mitchell, do we have executive session?
No, we do not, Mr. Chairman.
Not. Next item on the agenda is to adjourn, Mr. Fiorillo, motion to adjourn. Do I have a second? Second by Mr. Denon, all in favor? Against? Eyes have it, six zero. Thank you, everyone. Have a good night.